... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in prayer, please? Father, in the name of Lord Jesus, I pray that you prevent the destructive forces of terrorism directed against our nation, provide protection from evil attacks, and stop the aggressors that attempt to bring destruction to our nation and its people. May your hand of protection keep us safe. I stand against the spirit of fear that the accomplices of cowardly acts of terrorism allow this fear to turn to trust in you. May knowledge of this terrorism plans via tax be revealed to those who provide our national and international security. Help those powered to act swiftly to avert all danger protecting American lives and property. Provide strength, courage, and wisdom to protectors of our nations to administer their duties. Give wisdoms and insight of our government and everyone involved in the elimination of terrorism. Provide instruction in the development of effective and efficient anti-terrorist strategies that will give us an advantage against our aggressors, allowing the country to remain safe and secure. I pray that the instigators of terrorism recognize their evil ways and repent and denounce their cowardice acts of destruction against humanity. Without repentance, may they reap the consequences of those actions and may fear that our retaliation be greater than their hatred of democracy. Guide us in the efforts to seek out and eradicate those merchants of death. Reveal the names of those responsible and in allegiance with terrorist organizations and to our authorities. Enable the military to become swift, powerful, and accurate in any action of retaliation. Lord, help us to understand the lifestyle changes that may be necessary to endure our protection. Grant patience and tolerance to us by adapting to the safety precautions and measures we may experience. Enable us to realize that the cost of inconvenience is a small price we pay for the safety of our family and nation. May we have a moment of silence for the victims of the Boston Marathon tragedy. Lord, hear our prayers. We lift them up to you. It's in your name I most humbly pray. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Public Business Meeting for Thursday, April 18, 2013, right here in Room 100. Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir.
None. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our March 28, 2013 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under the report of the President, "The 2013-2014 Maryland General Assembly was filled with controversial and some believe counterproductive bills for the citizens living in counties like Allegheny County." One bill consisting of 63 pages, Bill 1499, the Campaign Finance Reform Act of 2013, which the synopsis is, "Providing that a candidate may join a slate or continue as a member of slate only under specified circumstances, altering limit amount of contributions a person may make in an election cycle, requiring that the contribution limits and transfer limits be adjusted in a specific manner at specific times, providing that contributions by two or more business entities be considered as being made by one contributor under specified circumstances." I'd like to highlight a couple of things from Bill 1499 in the Election Law 5-303. Number one, the new date for filing as a candidate for any office has been moved up by two months. The new date is April 9, 2013. The last date to file as a candidate for any office is the last Tuesday in February. That means at 9:00 on February 25, 2014. Since this is the first public meeting since the new date for candidates to file for county commissioner, it is my pleasure to announce that all three candidates filed today. Commissioner Brody led the charge, followed by myself and Commissioner Valentine. I'd like to assure you all that this board is committed to working hard, full-time, for you. All right, gentlemen, we've got a couple of presentations here, kind of some good celebrations. Item number one, gentlemen, is a retirement recognition. Mr. Bennett, would you come up with Mr. J. George?
Well, it all depends on what the budget process is.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening, sir.
Kind of mixed emotions. I'm here tonight to have you guys honor Jay for his service to the county. Jay's retiring, as you mentioned, as our Assistant Finance Director after 28 years of service to the county. During that time, he's been responsible for the implementation of our accounting system, tax system. He's helped with the implementation of our new utility system that we have onboard. As we certainly know, he's almost solely responsible for 20 consecutive years of earning the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for our financial report. He's been, to me, a lot of things, including over the years, a supervisor, mentor, a sounding board at times, someone to give me advice, but at the end of the day, he's been my friend. He's always been a hard worker, and any task you assigned him, you could guarantee would be done to a high standard. Part of this, and he's probably mad at me for even having him here, he did all of this without seeking attention. He was very happy to do his thing and be done with it, not get attention for it. So even though he may be a little upset with me, I think the honor is well deserved. So with that, I'd just like to wish him and Sharon very happy retirement. I'm going to be calling him Monday morning, probably. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Certainly. Jay, thank you very much for the years of service. You definitely are the unsung hero, the guy in the back who's keeping everything straight and narrow, and thank you very much. You and I have had conversations. You're going to be spending time with your wife and grandkids, so you're going to be definitely busy. And Commissioners, do you have any?
Congratulations, Jay. You'll be sadly missed, sir.
Jay, I really appreciate what you've done. It's no secret Allegheny County hasn't always had the easiest finances to take care of, but we've always been lucky to have great people working in that department, and you are definitely at the top. Thank you.
Jay, before we give you this official citation, I'd be remiss if you'd like to say something, but it's yours, but if you'd like to come on up, that's fine too, sir.
Just real quick, a couple of comments. I want to thank you for the very kind comments. I've been very fortunate to have a job that a lot of people don't have, that I really enjoy doing. I've been able to work with great people, work for great people, and there's been a lot of great Board of Commissioners. I've really enjoyed it, and thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Would you join us up here, please, sir? Jay, it is my pleasure to read this official citation. Allegheny County, Maryland, official citation. Be it here known to all, to all that our deepest appreciation and highest condemnation to offer to William J. George Jr., CPA, Assistant Director of Finance, and recognition of his 28 years of service, March 4, 1985, to April 19, 2013, to the citizens of Allegheny County. It is signed by all three county commissioners with the seal here in fixed. Sir, thank you very much for your commitment.
You could flank the flags, please. Lay in the middle.
Flank the flags.
Inside.
Inside, thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
I thought she was talking flank steaks.
It's not in the budget. Thank you.
Flash, you're snoring. Congratulations. Thank you, Jay. Made me miss lunch, then start talking about food. She's not right. She's doing it on purpose. Is that what it is?
Yep.
You know, just remember, they always need before models for all those diet exercises and stuff. It's job security, buddy. Okay. Item number two under our presentation is the National County Government Week. Mr. Westfall.
Commissioners, it gives me great pleasure, on behalf of the approximately 365 county employees of Allegheny County Government, to be here tonight and help you recognize National County Government Week. It's certainly appropriate to thank the dedicated and devoted employees who strive day in and day out to provide numerous essential services to our citizens and stakeholders. The employees of Allegheny County Government definitely contribute to making Allegheny County a wonderful place to live and work. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. We have a citation here as well. If you would come up, sir, for a presentation.
Before we read this citation, I think it needs to be highlighted again. In the times, the economic times that this county has had to go through, the state as well as the federal, this team of county employees have really, really banded together, picked up where the resources, and I mean that, of other teammates are not here, and really done a wonderful, wonderful job. And we need to really, really appreciate those team members because it's hard when things are lean and they're tight, and then we keep on asking them to give another 10%. I had an employer of mine way back when, when I worked for Bergman's Cleaners, and I thought I was doing a great job, which he said I was, and I would go back and say, "Okay, boss, I did that." He says, "Well, I think you can give me about 10% more. I think you can give me 10% more." I feel I got up to, I was giving him about 180%, and I think that's what our county employees are doing. But more especially, these three Commissioners, as well as the management team, appreciates all effort of the teamwork that they are giving, and we understand that. Trust me, we understand you are going above and beyond the call of duty. And on behalf of my fellow Commissioners, thank you. Brian, this official citation reads, "Whereas the Allegheny County Government is responsible for the well-being of 70,000-plus residents and has the capability to serve citizens and stakeholders for over 200 years, and whereas Allegheny County Government funds the public school system, develops and maintains infrastructure, water, sewer, and roads, directs law enforcement, manages emergency services, pursues economic development opportunities, operates the public health department, offers public transportation, supports the public library system, contributes to tourism, recreational, and cultural offerings, and assumes numerous other important responsibilities. Now therefore, to recognize the importance of the diverse work of Allegheny County Government and its commitment to the citizens and stakeholders, we proclaim the month of April 2013 to be National County Government Month in Allegheny County, Maryland, signed by all three county Commissioners." And thank you, Brian, for accepting this citation.
Thank you. I'm proud to be here.
Wait a minute, we're going to get a picture. Guy don't know the flag. We don't have to be flying. Maybe in next year's budget we can afford flash.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, item number three is the Frostburg State University Small Business and Technology Development Center presentation. I'll turn it over to the Deben Aaron-dashing Mr. Matt Diaz.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McKay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Always a pleasure to be here. Just one word about J. George, as, you know, we talk about all the accolades, and very well deserved. As I was reading his, I guess, his sheet today in the press release, I noticed that he is a graduate of Frostburg State University, so that's a good thing to talk about, and it's a great segue into what we're going to talk about tonight. Approximately a year ago, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Frostburg State University folks and the Small Business Development Center. Since that time, we have had Regional Counselor Mark Malek working out of our office at the county, and I thought it'd be a good idea, as Mark and I work on a day-to-day basis, Mark and me and my staff, to ask Mark to come up and just say a few words and give the county commissioners an update on the progress that has been made and the good things that this MOU has brought, not only to the county, but to even the municipalities throughout our county. With that being said, before I ask Mark to come up, I'd just like to recognize here tonight is Sandy Mahalco. She's the Regional Director of the Small Business Development Center. Mark, who's standing in the wings, waiting to give us the update. Way in the back is Steve Spar, the Chief of Staff at Frostburg State University, and I'd say we're really honored to have Dr. Gibraltar, the President of Frostburg State, join us tonight as well. But with that, I'll ask Mark to come up and just give you a quick overview of what the SBDC has done for us over the last 10 months.
Thank you, sir.
What I don't want to do is go through a whole lot of numbers, because numbers tend to sail over your head and give you a glassy-eyed look. I wanted to bring a little bit of numbers to you and then set the impact for the individuals that that affects in this area. And again, I'd like to thank the county for accepting the small business, and we now have a new designation of Technology Development Center. We had to go through a bunch of hoops to get that T, so we're now, we got a T in there too. Wanted to thank Allegheny County for bringing us in to their fold to let us be a part of the economic activity in this area. It really helps me do my job to have contact with Matt and his staff. So the numbers, since October, we follow a federal fiscal year, so since October through today, we, I have consulted 267 hours' worth with local businesses in Allegheny County. That represents 35 different small business owners. Overall, on a state average, we look to serve about five hours per client to make sure we're doing something constructive, something of impact for them. And the numbers that we've done here is about 7.6 hours, hard to be precise, but about 7.6 hours per client. We've created six jobs. We also like to say how many jobs we've stabilized. Right now, we don't have a confirmation of a stabilized job, but right now pending, we have 35 pending new jobs for a particular project that has been approved by the banker, and they just have to get through closing. We have another business activity, another lending renovation type of job that will stabilize another 30 jobs in the area. The lending activity in this area, we've helped pull together $600,000 worth of financing, and right now, we have in front of bankers, they've been approved, commitment letter signed, they just haven't gone to closing, of just a shade under $8 million. So we've got some, it takes a little while to get things in the pipeline, and they are starting to move through the pipeline quite nicely. What that is, those are the glassy-eyed numbers. We have spent a good deal of time working with an arborist, a tree cutter, tree climber. That's tough work, and these are tough times. They had a decent little state contract. State contract budgets were cut, so they've had to do things on their own. We've helped them save about $90,000 worth of debt, helped them restructure their debt to eliminate some of that, helped them gain about another $100,000 a year in sales. We're all pretty familiar with running these days, the tragedy of Boston. We helped a local person get into a timing service for Road Runners. It's an automatic type of thing. You wear a clip, you take off, they start the clock, you pass a thing, and it tells you who finished where and at what time. So those little things, that's a job, a simple little job, but it took a while to get that through the process. We're working with a pharmacy to help them restructure some of their debt. These are difficult times for pharmacies. This area has a large burden of pharmaceutical users, legal pharmaceutical users. Those things are expensive. Third-party payers are everywhere in that industry, and it's very difficult to manage the cash flow. We spent many, many hours working with this pharmacy to restructure their debt and to control their accounts, receivables, and accounts payables. Worked with a local hotelier to, through many hours, determine the feasibility, the placement, the financing. We met with seven different banks trying to pull this deal together, and we have that one now about to go to closing, a sizable investment from a bank, a sizable investment from the U.S. Small Business Administration's 504 Lending Program, and a very sizable contribution from that owner himself. And then from the big deal, back down to another small deal. We are in the process of waiting for approval. It's gone through four iterations of presentation to the RISE Program, RISE Partners of Maryland, which stands for Reaching Independence Through Self-Employment. This is an individual who receives disability income. He's put a business plan together to provide a service to local folks in this area so that he can become self-employed. Those are the types of things that really, I think, show the true worth of a Small Business Development Center, is to help somebody become productive. He right now is receiving taxpayer support, and if he's successful, he will be part of the supporter. So these, again, you get a great sense of community. I have probably what I would consider the best job in the world, simply because it's mom and apple pie. You're in a position to help pretty much, well, the broadest of spectrum of folks, to do nothing but good things for them, to help them run their businesses, to help them get their businesses started, and to help them remove themselves from business and keep that moving on through the sale of the business. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to do this and to be able to do it with such a great batch of folks. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mark, for sharing that. That's great, great. I, too, you can add your list to a dry cleaning. 12, or 13 years ago, we started with four employees, and I gotta, as soon as this meeting's over, I gotta do payroll for 24 employees, so there's a little success story there that's even touching home right here, so.
That's great. That's what we, we get to measure those sorts of things, and it's, it's jobs.
Yeah, we could never have been able to do what we did without the Small Business Administration, and I've shared that with you before, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Gibraltar, welcome, sir. Thank you very much for your commitment to, obviously, our community and your great partner. I'd love to have the opportunity, if you'd like to say a few words, sir, or what might be on your mind about this partnership, or Allegheny County in general, or Maryland lottery numbers that'll go over in another two hours.
I'm not sure if I could speculate on the Maryland lottery numbers, but it may be the only thing I'm prepared to speak about. But I really, it's an honor to be here, and it is truly an honor for Frostburg State University to be in partnership with the county. It means a lot to us, and you know that that relationship precedes all of us.
Yes, sir.
And will go on long after all of us are retired and doing other things, but, you know, the university's growing, job production in the county is really, I think, starting to go in the right direction. New businesses are coming in, which is great to see, and we couldn't do it without the Small Business Development Center, and so we're very grateful to Mark and to all of the people that work for him and for the partnership that exists. So thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for those words, sir. Okay, Commissioners, moving right along into our action agenda. Item number four is a road closing petition. Mr. Cazari.
Yes, glad to be here. Thank you.
Will you share?
This is a second reading on this, so this is the final of a road closing, Clover Alley, Clover Avenue, Potomac Park. It's been advertised. I have a petition here, as well as a copy of the newspaper ad that ran, and I suppose throwing it open to the public to see if there's any opposition. I don't think there is none. So we would present that and ask the Commissioners to take the appropriate action.
Mr. Redd.
This is, of course, this is the second phase. We already did the opening. There was no opposition then. Since there appears to be none, it would be appropriate, if you wanted to, to take action today, to actually close the road, and it, the order's been presented, been reviewed, and it would be appropriate.
So we're okay from start?
Yep.
Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to entertain item number five, which is road closing petition for said. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, item number six is a road opening petition from the Laval Sanitary Commission. And Mr. Hoover, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm Brandon Hoover of Heidi Coell Monteleone. Our firm represents the Laval Sanitary Commission. I'm here today with Judd Collins, the Chairperson of the Commission, and Mark Yoder, Commission Member. We are petitioning this board for the opening of a piece of Grant Street in the National Highway addition to Laval District 29. This is a paper road on a steep terrain that's grown over at this point. We're petitioning for the opening of 5,752.90 square feet, and if successful, we would subsequently petition that that section be closed. We placed an ad in the Cumberland Times News. It's appeared on March 18, again on the 25th, and then on April 1. And if there are questions or any public comment on the road opening, and if there are none, we would request that you would open the road so that we can subsequently petition to close it.
All right. What is our next step?
Well, this one, since it's the first time, although I've looked at it, probably should be referred to staff for comment. We'll take action probably at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, well, let's do that. Refer to staff, and we'll take action at our next meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, gentlemen, item number seven, Public Hearing on the Rawlings Water Project Phase One, Progress and Application for Funding for Rawlings Water Project Phase Two. Councilmen, Councilmen, no.
The short-winded David Nedved.
I am going to make this, I'm actually going to combine item seven and eight. I know no one's going to have any objection to that, Commissioner, but let me state that a notice was given in the Cumberland Times News on Saturday, April 13, 2013, that the Allegheny Commissioners, County Commissioners, would sponsor public hearings on the following subjects. The first is community development and housing needs. The second is the Rawlings Water Project, both Phase One and Phase Two, Phase One being a progress meeting, Phase Two being that an application for additional funding, and that would be the third public hearing. And then the fourth public hearing was going to be about the Mount Savage Water and Sewer Project, the progress of that project. So the question I'm going to ask of the audience, we're talking about four different public hearings, but is anybody interested in any of those topics? So that's four public hearings, four different subjects, and they were, the public hearings are being held for the sake of the public. are being held for the sake of the public. And that's it, commissioners, that's, we hold the required hearings for this.
And?
And that's it. That's all I'm asking, if I was for the public and...
That, like, took maybe three minutes, so.
Would you like it to take longer?
I mean, we're used to 30-minute dissertations.
But if anybody had any comment, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, I have to know.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, item number nine, gentlemen, is the Department of Public Works memorandum of agreement for Douglas Avenue Landslide Project. Mr. Patterson.
Good evening, everyone. Sir?
I need to tell you that I went to the eye doctor and ordered some new glasses. Now, they are not as stylish. I tried to get those type of frames that you have, and they said that, they said that my name didn't start with Adam Patterson GQ. And so, you know, I, when you get on McDonald's Quarterly magazines like I do, I don't get those kind of glasses.
Something to strive for.
Anyhow, you ready?
Yes, sir.
We're teeing you up. Go ahead, sir.
As you're aware, we've partnered with the Bureau of Mines before, and here we have a similar project facing us. And so I'm requesting that we enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Bureau of Mines to repair a failing slope along Douglas Avenue just west of Monocunning. And so you have a staff report there. The project is designed by a consultant selected by Bureau of Mines, and they're seeking county assistance in advertising bidding, running the project. With the project, they would reimburse staff.
Okay. Commissioners, any concerns? None hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the president of the county commissioners to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Adam.
You can rent the glasses for $100 now.
Adam, I'd like to thank you for your extra help on the ACM project.
From a PE to an attorney.
I'm sorry?
He said you can rent them for $100 bucks an hour. He went from being a PE to an attorney.
No, 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 you can't even talk to an attorney for...
$100 to that.
Yeah.
I'll refer that to counsel. All's quiet on the western front. Spoken like attorney. Okay. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda this evening, please?
Commissioners, we have five items for your consideration this evening. For the most part, four of them are rather perfunctory. We have commission appointments for UPRC and the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have an agreement extension with Penmar Recycling, and a travel request. But item number 12 is a mouthful, and I would like for Dick DeWor to take just a few moments and bring us up to date on what we believe to be a very important project for our telecommunications capability here in our emergency services division, so.
I have to say that he was Mr. July in the McDonald's Quarterly.
I was also Mr. February. Some things are better left unsaid. With that being said, what you have one consent agenda tonight, commissioners, is authorization of acceptance and of a bid package for the Barton Communications Tower. That's a project that has been on our list of things for a number of years, and originally started out with federal funding, but because of funding shortfalls, we were unable to pursue that. But we are now in a position where we can do that. We did receive a supplemental federal grant on this project for $150,000. And I think the total bid package come in in the neighborhood of $550,000, but we're prepared to move ahead with the first phase of that project, which is installation of the communication shelter. And I believe the final dollar amount is like $156,000. So it's sort of time-sensitive. We're moving quickly so that we can expend those federal funds before they reach an expiration date, and your acceptance and awarding of that bid package tonight will allow us to meet that deadline.
Perfect. That tower, quite a how much of an area up there.
That tower's gonna be rather significant. The George's Creek area has been one of those areas that's been difficult for us to provide telecommunications to. You have that mountain, but what people don't recognize is if you build a tower on top of a mountain, there's also a shadow area that's part of that. So this tower is going to help provide a lot of telecommunications needs, and ultimately, we're hopeful that we can attract a cell phone vendor to that tower site as well to help us generate revenue on the project as well.
You're gonna host, I think you were gonna host some equipment for the state police on that tower, too?
Yeah.
Is that still part of the package?
Yes. As with every tower site that we work on or we maintain, we do it cooperatively with the state of Maryland. So public safety assets from either the state or Allegheny County, or even our neighbor in Garrett County, will have access to that telecommunications site.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept our consent agenda.
So moved.
And second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. February and July. Mr. Everly, do we have any correspondence?
Commissioners, we have a single piece of correspondence for your consideration here this evening, and it's a letter to Mr. Richard Lor, who's vice president of development of the Maryland Public Television. And it relates to the recent production of Our Town, Cumberland.
Okay. Would you please read that into the record, sir?
Dear Mr. Lor, as the Allegheny County Commissioners, we wish to extend our deepest appreciation to Maryland Public Television for your well-received production of Our Town, Cumberland, showcasing Cumberland and Frostburg. We are pleased that several important economic development components were emphasized. Allegheny College of Maryland's workforce training programs and Frostburg State University's post-bachelor advanced degree programs were prominently showcased. The production also featured our community's reasonable cost of living and the availability of state-of-the-art health care. We enjoyed the numerous quality of life reflections, as our visitors enjoy the welcoming spirit of our residents, picturesque natural beauty, and the flourishing arts community. Allegheny County offers diverse active and passive activities, ranging from rock climbing to berry picking. Residents have wonderful 10-minute commutes, the opportunity to shop at Farmer's Market six months a year, and much more. Maryland Public Television captured and presented our region's extraordinary balance of energy and tranquility. Economic development is desirable here, and old-fashioned hospitality lives here. As the Allegheny County Commissioners, we especially appreciate the outreach to all to come and experience our community, to visit, make your home, or even establish a business in Allegheny County. We wish to thank Maryland Public Television for this exceptional production. Sincerely, the Allegheny County Commissioners.
We're in consensus?
Sign.
I don't think I should sign it in red.
In red?
No, I don't think you should do that. So we're consistent. While they're signing that letter, is there any wisdom or, I'll just leave it at wisdom, that Mr. Rudd would like to share? Thank you very much, sir.
Well, I do want to, if I could have a point...
Yes, you may, sir.
...in privilege. Jay George, I would be remiss if I didn't say I've enjoyed working with Jay for many, many years. He's an excellent employee, and best wishes, and Godspeed.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Dave?
Sir?
Commissioners, any statements, comments?
Who first?
Any, meany, money, mo, catch a tiger by his toe. Pick a number.
173. Your first.
Shoot, your first. I don't know how the guy does it.
That was a good guess.
Dr. Gibraltar, here's the numbers guy. He's gonna have to go on the Maryland Lottery.
As always, our calendar is on the website, posted every week. I'm gonna keep you abreast of a little problem. It's continuing to rise over at the airport, which we have a meeting next Thursday, which I was hoping to report the following Thursday, some direction and some exciting things we got going on. But this needs, put out there first, a former, ex-employee slash former board member is making waves for us once again. He's thrown a temper tantrum, and I'm not gonna stand by and let this happen. So I'm gonna tell you right up front what's going on. He's went to every funding agent we deal with, and is making all kinds of wild accusations. He's made personal accusations against me from day one. And I've been on that board over there for almost two and a half years, and for two years and four months of it, has been dealt with nothing but drama with this person. So just so yous know, 'cause he's going to Mineral County Commissioners Tuesday night, I have no idea what his agenda is, and try to slam the PHA some more. I have dealt with him in the past, and I will deal with him again. But it's not gonna interfere with what that airport truly is. It's an economic engine for Allegheny and Mineral Counties, and it will be that, and I am gonna push through with that. But I'm not gonna stand by and let these, for lack of better words, terroristic tactics that he's hitting from Maryland Aviation Authority, the West Virginia Aviation Authority, to everybody with. So, sir, it will be dealt with one way or the other, 'cause I know that it's getting back to yous, but I will deal with this, so.
Well, thank you for that update, sir.
Certainly.
We're confident in your leadership. Commissioner Valentine?
This past Monday, we had another Marcella shale safety drilling initiative meeting at ACM. There will be another one this coming Monday, also at ACM. Those meetings are open to the public, and it's an issue that a lot of people in the public are quite interested in. But then on Wednesday, Dave Everly, myself, had the honor and privilege of attending a presentation at Frostburg University. Some people here in the crowd may remember that last year, a gentleman by the name of Tom Kozikowski, who is a teacher of environmental sciences up at Mountain Ridge, brought his class in and gave us an update on their views of Marcella shale drilling. Wednesday, he had a class there, and it's sort of inspiring to see that a teacher can get the interest of students enough. Actually had one former student there. The student started in Mr. Kozikowski's class as a sophomore, graduated high school last year, and is a college student this year at Frostburg, but is still working with that high school class. And that class has been doing water sampling near the Frostburg reservoir in streams or within 2,500 feet of where there's actually Marcella shale drilling going on. And they're doing baseline studies, which is something that our study commission has felt is crucial to do. So it's always easy for somebody to say something is contaminated water, but it's sort of hard to prove it unless you've got the baseline. You know what the water was like before things ever started. So this is a high school class that did a very professional study on water quality. Glad to say that they found no problems with those streams at this point, but I'd like to give kudos to Mr. Kozikowski to be able to inspire his students year after year to work on a project like this.
Perfect.
Commissioners, just briefly, Commissioner Valentine and I discussed this today, and we've been in contact with Mr. Kozikowski, and he's gonna be providing to us a digital copy of that presentation so that we can have that affixed to our website for citizens to review.
Good, good. Okay, wonderful. Thank you, commissioners. Looks like we have under consigence who have signed up, Mr. David Lauder. As David comes to the podium, just remind everybody about our five and five. Mr. Lauder, if you would give your name and address for the record, sir? And the podium is yours.
Sure, my name is David Lauder, and I guess I'm representing Maplehurst Country Club, Frostburg, Maryland. Good evening, commissioners. Before I start, I would like to thank Linda, who helped me out, 'cause this is the first time I've ever done anything like this. So she was my guidance on what to do. So thank you, Linda. Again, my name is Dave Lauder, and I'm currently the treasurer of Maplehurst Country Club, and I'm here representing the board of directors of the club. Three years ago, the newly-elected board of directors upon taking office, discovered that in order for the club to continue to operate, there were several old issues, as well as some few new issues that had to be addressed. Some of the problems that we found include the fact that we were in arrears for several taxes for federal and state levels. We made contacts with various agencies and initiated a payment plan to resolve those issues. After three years, I'm happy to report that we are current on all federal and state taxes. Another issue that we faced was at local level, involved the city of Frostburg and the club's use of the city water. Last year, we were able to purchase a much-needed water wagon to utilize ponds on the course. This enabled the club to reduce our city water surcharge from $1,500 a month three years ago to $700 a month last year, down to $94 a month beginning this month. So that helped us out a lot there. In addition, a major issue was discovered in 2011, was the fact that our Allegheny County tax assessment was considerably higher than either the Cumberland Country Club, which was $1.8 million, or Four Sisters Country Club, which was $1.4 million. Maplehurst was being assessed at almost $3 million. Obviously, there was a major concern for the board, and it appeared to be incorrect. Part of the assessment issue dealt with the fact that the previous boards were not aware of the country club agreement that was available through the Maryland State Department of Assessment and Taxation. This agreement, when signed, states if the country club agrees to a nondiscriminatory policy, the club taxes cannot increase for a 10-year period. Upon becoming aware of this tax policy, the board filed the necessary paperwork, and Maplehurst was accepted in this program, starting for the 2012 tax period. Additionally, upon reviewing the new assessment with the county club agreement in place, our board realized that Maplehurst was still being assessed a much higher rate than clubs previously mentioned. When we looked into the discrepancy, the board found that Maplehurst had been taxed at a considerably higher rate because club property runs adjacent to State Route 36. After further examination of the land plot at the assessment office, we found that the property lines of the club did indeed run up to Route 36. However, and this is the important part, our board was able to demonstrate, or demonstrate to the state, that the state owns 11 acres of the property in question, which was deeded to them back in 1974. So basically, the plot still said we owned the land, but it was deeded to the state back in '74. So the lines have been redrawn effective December of 2012. Obviously, we believe that, obviously, we believe that this may have something to do with a huge discrepancy between the assessments that I stated previously. It's no secret that Maplehurst is not in the condition of either Cumberland Country Club or Four Sisters. The board asked for our property to be reassessed, and as the result of reassessment, had the reduction of our assessed value by $1.6 million. So that's something that doesn't just happen overnight. So, I mean, our property has been that way for a while. Years of carrying this high and arguably unjust assessment has resulted in excessive tax bills that have been a major financial hardship on our club. It has placed a burden on Maplehurst, and it has made it difficult, if not impossible, to operate in a sound financial manner. The board of directors of Maplehurst Country Club respectfully requests that the board of county commissioners, for relief in the form of a tax abatement of the interest and penalties assessed on the clubs for late payments for the taxes for the past three years. Additionally, we are requesting the board of county commissioners to agree to a structural payment for taxes for a tax-only plan that will allow Maplehurst to operate in a fiscal, sound manner. Our club has been in existence for 70-plus years, and has been economical and recreational asset for the citizens of Frostburg and the entire Allegheny County community over that time period. Your assistance in this is important matter, would be greatly appreciated, and would serve the citizens of Allegheny County well. Thank you, sincerely, Dave Lauder, treasurer. And I left my cell phone number and work number there, and you have my email address also.
Perfect. To bring this to our attention, and what we'll do is refer this to staff, and we will get back with you and see if there's something we can or cannot do, and for the most part, bring us up to speed for the history of this.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you. Okay, I'd like to remind everyone that our next public business meeting will be Thursday, April 25th, 2013, at 5:00, right here in Room 100. And like everyone... April 25th, 2013, at 5:00, right here in Room 100. And I'd like everyone to see the news release about Allegheny County's government schedule. Once again, I'd like to officially thank Mr. Jay George for his years of service to the county. The county is in the fiscal condition, not all in due part by him, but his fellow teammates. And thank you very much, Jay. Like we like, excuse me, like we always like to close our meetings, we thank you for participating in your government, and I hope you have a nice evening. Thank you. Thank you.